Good afternoon and welcome to our first meeting of September. We have a full audience tonight. Appreciate you guys being with us tonight. And those of you who are watching this live on our Electric City Television, the invocation tonight will be in by Councilman Matt Harbin. Our respects to the flag will be led by Councilman Chuck Anderson. Please rise.
Let's pray. Thank you, Lord, for allowing us to live in a free country. I pray for the safety of our military personnel in harm's way, protecting our freedom. I pray for our President, Congress, and Senate as they make difficult decisions in the coming days regarding this freedom. I pray for our firefighters, our police officers, and our employees that make our city a safe place to live. I pray for our administration and our council that we would make decisions that please you and make our city a better place to call home. In your name I pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've got a couple of things on... in regards to special recognition. We have a ceremony, a swearing-in ceremony, before we get into the body of our meeting. But first of all, I'd like to recognize the Leadership Anderson class that's here tonight, and just to congratulate these guys for installing as their class project. And I think a lot of people in this room have been involved in Leadership Anderson through the chamber. But their class project was installing a, what's called a Born Learning Trail. And that was at Watson Park, at one of our parks. And they did this on June 22nd. And the Born Learning Trail consists of ten signs and activities that are used to encourage young people in engagement and early learning opportunity. And more than anything, it just builds awareness and education and asks people to go into action in regards to helping our youngest citizens. The project was funded by an anonymous donor from a local foundation and the class participants. Our folks helped in the installation of it. Our city Public Works and Parks and Recreation Division all had resources that helped in the completion of the project. And one of our own was involved in this leadership class. And I'm gonna get Jeff Caldwell, our utilities, our water... what are you? I was gonna say Utilities Director, to come up and say a few words in regards to the project. Jeff? Yeah, there's no problem. Come on, everybody, come on. While they're coming up, I had the opportunity to talk to some future nurses. Becky Campbell brought her students to be the first graduating class from AU, am I right? Good. And these guys are here tonight. They're all young. They asked me, "What can young people do?" And guess what? This is what young people are... Go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to say, and I'm sure these folks will agree, that Class 29 was the best class. Our class graduated twenty-two leaders from areas in real estate, banking, healthcare, education, administration, consulting, news media, accounting, and nonprofit and government sectors. The class has an opportunity for individuals to grow as leaders, to learn from each other, to really grow in community with each other and learn more about this community. I want to personally thank the mayor and city council and city management for their confidence in me and to put me in this worthwhile program. For more on our project, I was gonna turn it over to Tammy Wilmore. We'll have a few slides, too.
Mayor, you summed it up beautifully. And again, we thank you all for your support in this. What you all will be seeing in the next month is a public awareness campaign about the importance of starting early with your children, getting them ready to start school, hence the Born Learning Trail. The...I'm with United Way. The seven United Ways from the ten counties of the upstate have partnered together, will be launching a big born learning public awareness campaign, and included in that is the Born Learning Trails. So we will be flooding you all with that from movie theaters, newspapers, and TV ads. So keep your eyes open. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. May I say something?
Yes, sir.
Sometimes it's hard for people to know who to call and to thank, but that particular project was in my ward, and I want to pass along some thanks from the people in my ward to you people because several folks have called me and said, "Oh, that's a neat idea. That's a cute idea. What a great thing to do." So thank you for all that you did for that part. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask Chief Stewart to come down. He's got a couple of promotions.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. We have two promotions tonight. Both officers are being promoted to Lieutenant. And I'd like to ask Captain Mike Brecon and Councilman Chapman to come and assist me. The first officer that will come on down is Lieutenant Dennis Chapman. If he'll come on down, I'll tell you a little bit about Lieutenant Chapman. He's a twenty-three-year veteran of the City of Anderson Police Department. He started his career in 1974 with the Anderson County Rescue Squad. In 1999, he was promoted to Sergeant, and he is always utilizing his experience and his training to assist those on his ship. He is a true law enforcement professional. He portrays a good image to the public while enforcing the law. He has received a Good Conduct Medal, Special Merit, Crime Stoppers Award, and Anderson City Service Award. I believe Lieutenant Chapman, you have some family here tonight if you'd like to recognize them.
Wife Angie and my daughter Melissa, and three sister-in-laws and two nieces sitting here.
Y'all gonna raise your hand?
There they are.
Okay, our next candidate is Lieutenant Jeff Moser. Lieutenant, if you'd come on down. Lieutenant is a twenty-three-year veteran of the Anderson Police Department. He started in 2000, but also was previously employed in Lake County and Orange County Sheriff's Office in Florida, there for ten years. Moser has worked in Patrol, Vicent Narcotics, the Street Crimes Unit, and most recently in CID. Moser has served the Police Department as a Field Training Officer, our City-County Gang Task Force Officer, and also a member of the SWAT team. He's also been recognized by the Police Department for Officer of the Month. What I'd like to do is have the officer step forward and... Councilman Chapman, if you'll come down, and Captain Brecon, if you'll step down. What we're gonna do now is replace the badges on their uniforms. And Lieutenant, I believe you have some family here also.
Yes, sir. My wife Teresa, my son Michael, my daughter Rachel.
All right, if you'll raise your right hand, repeat after me. Take your right. On my honor, I will never betray my badge.
On my honor, I will never betray my badge.
My integrity, my character, or the public trust.
My character, my integrity, and public trust.
I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions.
For our actions.
I will always uphold the Constitution.
I will always uphold the Constitution.
My community.
My community.
And the agency I serve.
And the agency I serve.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Amen.
By the way, Mayor, Don and Dennis are brothers. We would like the audience to be recognized as part of the family, but...
Great, appreciate it. Great promotions. I'm gonna ask Chief Horn to come up. He's got a couple of awards and a swearing-in ceremony. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, city manager. We appreciate your time tonight. We do have several recognitions. First, I'd like to call up firefighter David Irby. We're gonna be a little bit out of order. We're trying to get guys in from calls, so it was inevitable it was gonna get called sooner or later. Firefighter Irby is gonna be receiving the Life Saving Award tonight. And to give you a little history of what happened, on May 21st, 2013, Fire Station Two received a call to a vehicle accident in front of the Anderson Mall. As firefighters approached the vehicle, they noticed an unconscious female in the driver's seat. A civilian bystander stated that she was barely breathing. As firefighter Irby approached her and was checking her vitals, she actually stopped breathing and went into cardiac arrest at that moment. Immediately, they was able to remove the patient from the vehicle and started CPR. She eventually regained her pulse and started breathing on her own, and she made a full recovery. David's partner is not here tonight. He just switched shifts, so we brought him up tonight to receive the award, and we'll get his partner, Hunter Hartline, later on. And David, for your actions, we would like to present this certificate of commendation for actions that contributed to saving a life. And also, you're gonna receive a ribbon that will be worn on your Class A uniform for this day forward.
Congratulations.
Okay, we're gonna skip firefighter Hawkins, he's the one that's not here, and we'll go into our swearing-in ceremony. Call it Jason Prescott. Firefighter Jason Prescott is a 2005 graduate of Dora High School in Mount Dora, Florida. He attended Maryland Fire Rescue Institute in College Park, Maryland, and received certification as an EMT, firefighter one and two, and hazmat ops. He has successfully completed his probationary period and is qualified to be sworn in as an Anderson City firefighter. So Jason, if you will, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear to do my duty as an Anderson City firefighter.
I, Jason Prescott, do solemnly swear to do my duty as an Anderson City firefighter.
To serve my commanding officers.
To serve my commanding officers.
With respect and dignity.
With respect and dignity.
To serve the citizens of the city of Anderson.
To serve the citizens of the city of Anderson.
With compassion, courage, and integrity.
With compassion, courage, and integrity.
And to uphold the laws, rules, and regulations.
And to uphold the laws, rules, and regulations.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The state of South Carolina.
The state of South Carolina.
And the city of Anderson.
And the city of Anderson.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Okay, lastly, I'd like to call up Battalion Chief Dunlap, who's gonna receive an award for firefighter Josh Hawkins, who didn't make it back from hazmat call, unfortunately. To give you a little history, on July 10th, 2013, Fire Station Three received a call to cardiac arrest at 1,001 King Millport. Firefighter Hawkins performed compressions and ventilations on the mill socket that eventually regained the pulse and blood pressure, and this was directly related to the actions of firefighter Hawkins. And I hate that he didn't make it back, but Tom will accept the award for him, make sure he gets it, and also he'll have his ribbon that he'll wear on his Class A uniform from this day forward. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, guys. We'll move right along. The minutes of our August 12th minutes meeting have been distributed. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes?
I move to approve of the minutes.
First by Dr. Thompson. Second by Mr. Harbin. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the minutes of August 12th passed unanimously. We have one item of old business, and that item is request the second and third reading of ordinance 13-12 to rezone 450 Sayer Street from RM 10 Multifamily Residential to NC Neighborhood Commercial. Ms. Moore?
Mr. Mayor, Council, in the way of a reminder, you did give first reading to this matter on August 12th at your meeting. The Planning Commission also gave unanimous recommendation at their meeting on August 6th. There's really been no change what this is. The automotive repair shop and service center did have a fire. It was non-conforming, so this will allow the business person to rebuild and be conforming with the city code. So we recommend this on second and third reading.
Go ahead.
This is in my ward, and it's a burned-out place that is being repaired and rebuilt. It's gonna be an asset to the community, so I move that we approve this on second reading.
Second. First by Dr. Thompson. Second by Mr. Lockridge. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Making mention of accepted on third and final.
First by Mr. Chapman.
Second.
Second by Dr. Thompson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously on the third and final reading. When's the business gonna be open? I mean, any time?
Oh, well, they're just getting started.
Just getting started.
Yeah.
Okay, good. We have two items of new business, and that first item is request consideration of an ordinance re-amending the 2012-2013 budget. Ms. Moore?
Mr. Mayor, Council, in the way of a little bit of background, the budget process starts in February, doesn't get adopted till June, and actually takes place in July and then operates for twelve months. And a lot of times, in February and March, when those budgets are going together, the city doesn't really know if it's gonna get a grant or not, or other changes that are in this recommendation. So what this is, is during the preparation period, once that budget's adopted, we have been...had the good fortune of receiving a number of grants. We had the good fortune of getting the Carolina Renn Park done and a bond issue, and then we do have some opportunities in community development. So those are what those are. Those are unforeseen at the time the budget goes together. Nothing unusual. You should have seen probably all, if not most, if not all of these changes come before you during the year. Most grants do require your acknowledgement that the grant is there. But these are quite sizable, but let me just cover them real quickly, and then you can ask Peggy any detailed questions. In the general fund, we've got grants for fire and the IMT program, police, and number like Safe Neighborhoods, Secure Our Schools, Prison Rape Elimination, et cetera. The bond was for the Carolina Renn Park, we can call it that now. And then as far as community development, that was for some of the economic development incentives, Home Consortium, Recovery Act, and HAP funds. All in all, the general fund would be amended by $2,616,256.58. Hospitality budget would be amended by $1,244,506. And again, the general fund's primarily the grants. The hospitality is the bond proceeds for the park, and then community development by So hopefully you had a chance to look at those. You probably recall them or had a chance to ask Peggy about them, but we'd recommend these budget amendments, and these are in the past budget that is now under audit, so you make these adjustments. And you can see, I would say this real quickly, the reason we do this in particular, and the Police Department gets a lot of grants, and if those expenditures go against the chief, it will make him look bad, like he's overspent if we don't give him these amendments. So it's a management tool for them, so we'd recommend this to you on first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any questions, comments?
I have a comment, if you don't mind. I think it's commendable that we're getting all of these grants by the Police Department and other departments. I think it adds to the quality of the life of the people that live in the city, so I have nothing good...
There are good things to say about it.
So I move that we recommend the changes in the budget for this year.
First by Mr. Lockridge.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harbin. Further discussion? Pretty clear cut. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. We wanna thank everybody that had a hand in that from all the departments. You do a great job in making sure that we spend our money wisely, and we get very competitive on a lot of the things that we're competing with grant-wise. One more last item of new business, and that is request consideration to purchase vehicles for the Police Department. Ms. Moore?
Mr. Mayor, Council, this is some really good news. Also, is a product of good work that the Police Department has done. They've assisted in the Federal Drug Enforcement Agency, and one of the nice parts about that is that when drug dealers or other people like that are brought to justice, a lot of time their assets and those get divvied up or have the opportunity to be divvied up between the participating agencies. And our Police Department's done a really nice job, and this couldn't come at a better time. As you know, the last few years with the economy, our capital expenditures have not been what we would like for them to do. I never thought in my career as a city manager I would see us not buying ten new police cars a year, instead trying to get by on patching up the ones we have or even buying used cars. So this is really good news for the department. It makes up for a couple of years that we've gone without. So what you really have here is that we have the fortune of, and these funds are in a special account that Peggy takes care of, $410,000 of revenue sharing funds from these drug cases. And I know Chief Stewart, if he's not down, he'll come down, but I'll quickly cover it for him. What we'd like to do is we have one 2013 Chevrolet Silverado Crew Cab. That's actually for narcotics. I hate to say that, so we don't want our drug people looking out for it, but it is one that we use in our drug deals. We have six new Dodge Chargers for Patrol. Those are under state budget at $22,000. Really, all of these are state contracts, $22,918. We also...those will be black. These are in stock with the state contractor in Beaufort, and they have held those for a couple of weeks for us to get to this meeting. And then there's additional three unmarked black Chargers that will be on the state-level street-level unit and the command staff. So all total, the purchase is $234,991 of the 410. We'll probably bring in back some other things. Again, these meet all our specs, all the law enforcement-type specs, and they are all under state contract. And I'm not going into all the details. You'll see those in your executive summary. You'll also see the ones that were the ten vehicles that will be replaced. So with that, we'd recommend that you approve the vehicles as outlined by Chief Stewart under state contract.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Chief, sir, any additional questions?
I just have one.
Mr. Chapman?
Car guy. The biggest difference was the front-wheel drive to rear-wheel drive. I know we tried the Impalas on this last go-round, and those were all front-wheel-drive cars, but now the new Chargers are gonna be rear-wheel drive. Is there a reason why we're switching back?
Well, the main reason, among other things, was the fuel economy, but also when our officers go to the academy for twelve weeks, they are trained in rear-wheel-drive vehicles. So when...right now, as they come back here, back to us, we're actually training them in a front-wheel-drive car. It just makes more sense to go ahead with a rear-wheel-drive vehicle. That's what they're trained in, high speed and maneuverability.
Good point.
Chief, was this just one law enforcement, drug enforcement case, or just several, or...?
The majority was one case that we worked. Our embedded officer that's in with the DEA, it was a multi-jurisdictional takedown, and with that, several seizures came from semis to houses and several vehicles and property that trails all the way back to other states.
Do you anticipate that we'll get...I mean, is that 410 set in stone? Could it be higher?
I anticipate that our officer is doing a great job in this DEA task force, and we look forward to his continued success. This is not just an Anderson City issue, it's an upstate issue.
Upstate issue. Good. Any other questions, comments?
I think it's great. I move that we approve the purchase of these vehicles for the Police Department.
First by Dr. Thompson. Second by Mr. Chapman. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Passes unanimously. Administrative briefing. Ms. Moore?
Only the calendar. Tomorrow night is the EC3 meeting here at City Hall at 6:00 PM, and that's the meeting of community leaders across at the mayor's post, and hopefully council members can attend. Also this week is the Anderson County Municipal Association meeting in Honey Path. If you plan to go, if you'll let Brandy know, she'll report that to them. Then the rest of the month is really one other council meeting, and we continue the block party, and so, yeah, block party downtown.
I would say before, the new superintendent's gonna be here, Mr. Wilson, is gonna be here tomorrow at 6:00. So really impressed with him. He's trying to get out in the community, and he has a unique approach as far as educating K-12, if he can make it. Think we got a couple of items, executive?
Yeah, we do. Let me announce those for the public. They are contractual matters regarding economic development. There are actually two. We're not at liberty to say who those companies are or the details, but we'll discuss those. I did not expect any action back in the public section sector. Number two is there's some legal advice. It's a case, Riddle versus the City of Anderson. We'd like to bring you up to speed on that case.
Good. I would entertain a motion to go in the executive session. Salute? First by Mr. Chapman. Second by Mr. Harbin. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We stand as executive.
We stay in the executive session. Entertain a motion to come out of the executive session.
Some who?
First by Mr. Lockridge.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harbin. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We stay in our executive session. In the executive session, we got briefings from the city manager in regards, and the city attorney in regards to contractual matter, economic development. There are no action being taken in that regard. We also had legal advice on the Riddle versus the City of Anderson by the city attorney, and there will be no action taken from that motion, from that advice either. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second?
First by Mr. Anderson, second by Dr. Thompson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We stay on adjourn.
You did that.